We'll be starting up in a couple of minutes. I have six thirty now, so I'll give a couple of moments.
We have a different background this evening.
Yep, different location.
I hope your neighbors don't do anything objective back there.
Yeah, we'll find out. Well, you guys will see it first, not me, my back.
I don't know. I saw Russell on a meeting yesterday. Those Buffalo have not moved in two days.
Randy, you okay for me to get ready for the meeting to start?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Well, like that. Have your attention, please, and good evening, and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, September tenth, two thousand twenty twenty. Tonight, we do have three matters on the agenda. We do have requests for continuance on one and requests for withdrawal on the other, and then we have a site plan review amendment as well. So I will start off with the site plan review and special permit for six seventy-one, six eighty-three Rogers Street. Pure Lowell Inc. is seeking site plan review and special permit approval to open a recreational marijuana dispensary at the above address. The project is in the regional retail zoning district, and the use requires site plan review approval under section eleven point four point two, subsection eight, special permit approval under section twelve point four point oh, and then any other relief requested by the Lowell zoning ordinance. The applicant is present and has requested a continuance, so I'll turn it over to the attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Joseph Clermont, representing Pure Lowell Inc., regarding the special permit for six seven-one, six eighty-three Rogers Street, will be for you tonight requesting a continuance to your next meeting on September twenty-fourth. One of the items the board wanted to review was the feasibility and advisability of a dedicated left turn lane onto the site, and that matter was presented to Mass DOT who has it under advisement at this point. We had hoped to have a recommendation from them by now. Unfortunately, we do not have that. I think it's an important piece of the puzzle to find out, you know, what they think, so we're going to respectfully request continuance until September twenty-fourth, if the board would allow it.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any questions?
Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to reiterate, I'm recusing myself on this project.
Okay, thank you very much. So tonight, then, when we vote on this, both our alternates can be voting on the continuance due to the fact that Mr. Malovich is unavailable this evening because he is ill. So I'll make a motion that we continue the matter till September twenty-fourth.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion has been made in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the oppositions, they no. Hearing none, that matter is approved for the continuance, and anybody who's watching this evening, the matter for Rogers Street will be back on our agenda on June twenty-fourth. Thank you very much.
September twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth, I'm sorry. I wrote it down. My apologies. So, yeah, September twenty-fourth.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Good luck, Attorney Clermont. Thank you. I know we had you here to midnight last time, so.
That's because I got behind George for some reason.
Yeah, be careful what George is saying, but we know. All right, thank you, counsel.
Good night.
So moving along, we have on a site plan review on forty-four Rock Street. BTGO LLT is seeking a site plan review approval to construct four townhouse condominiums at the above address. The property is in the urban neighborhood multifamily zoning district, and the use requires site plan review approval under section eleven point four point two, subsection two, and any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. We received a letter from the applicant which has requested to withdraw the application without prejudice. Any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the request.
Okay, so the motion is made in second to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. Motion is made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, that matter is allowed. Moving along to a site plan review amendment to Prince Ave, one Markley Way. The Markley Group is seeking to amend a two thousand eighteen site plan review approval to expand the data center at the above address. The data center is in the light industrial zoning district, and the applicant is seeking approval for outdoor water tanks and a relocated driveway in the northeastern part of the property. The changes require site plan review approval under section eleven point four point two and any other release that's requested by the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Teo Kinnermans. Can I share my screen, please?
Sure.
I would like to. Let me know if this all is visible, we all.
I can see it.
Okay, thank you. So as you, this was the agenda item that you just read. These are the three people that we would like to speak tonight. So Jeff Landigan, Executive Vice President for the Markley Group, Luke Kipper, Project Manager for the Markley Group, and then myself, Senior Principal with Stand Tech Planning and Consulting. And so if these two could be unmuted as well, maybe they can unmute themselves, but otherwise, that's it. So I will turn it over to Luke now, who will do the intro of the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Luke Kipper. I'm a project manager with the Markley Group. I'd like to start by thanking the board for their time this evening. I know we were in front of you previously for this site plan as a minor modification. We certainly appreciate your patience with us as we move forward, obviously, with the whole site plan approval for this. You know, our apologies for not filing this correctly the first time. We instituted some of the comments and feedback that we've received as part of that minor modification, you know, and hopefully we've got some good mutually beneficial designs for here that works for works for the city of Lowell and works for the neighbors. We are aware that the neighbors have some concerns about site plan modification. Hopefully, the photo simulation, the drawings we have here tonight will help alleviate some of those concerns. You know, these storage tanks aren't something people generally see or being seen installed, so, you know, we've got some more information for everyone tonight as well as the responses to the comments that the board has had, so hopefully we can, you know, share the photo, share the information about these tanks, and, you know, come to a resolution to move forward. Teo, if you could just run through the drawings and the approval?
Sure, thanks, Luke. So this is the master plan that ran the plan for of the oops, sorry, ran the plan of the drawings that you have in your in your packet, black and white plan. It shows it shows pretty much what was approved beforehand, and it it shows some of the adjustments we would like to make, the main adjustments, as the agenda item says, is in this this part, the northern part of the site, and in this, the southeastern part of the site that we want to explain further tonight. So this is this is the overlay, and you can see here in red the old plan and the new plan in red and your plan in black, black and white. These two areas, zooming in on those, you can see here the equipment yard on the northern and the overlay where it appears that there is quite a few changes, but it's all pretty much equipment that is just moving in a different location. Here, you can you can see that a bit more, the two images separated. You can see what was approved previously on the top image and the our new proposal in the southern image. The major changes here is really the relocation of the and of the generators. We had twenty generators shown on the previous image and the previous approved plans. We still are showing that, but they're just in a different location. But as you can see here, the fuel storage that we had, that had been previously approved has actually disappeared. We have opted, because I think we think it's a better solution to have a the have belly tanks, as it's called, for each of these generators. So these the generators now sit on top of the tank, so they have their individual tanks and not these five tanks that are sitting here and that then would be feeding these these generators by underground piping. So each of them each of these generators have their belly tanks, which is which is a much safer condition. We are in front of the city council for a fuel storage permit in a couple of weeks, so that that process is is ongoing. What you also see is here on the bottom, you can see that the road is connected. We now have a ring road all the way around our property. It used to be, and it's still, there is there is a big grade change between where the fuel storage tanks were and the generator yard is about fourteen feet of grade change, and we're by by making this big swing and coming down, we we are capturing the grade change and therefore making it better for the fire department to get around the building. Also, you you'll see, we've added this gate, and there's also a gate on the other side because we do not want the people who don't necessarily need to go around the building to be able to drive around the building, so vehicle traffic will be contained to the front of the building. But this, in short, is the the change on this side of the building. Then here is the the other side of the building, the southeast side of the building, where you can see that we've demolished a piece of the building here. This was the boiler room that's been demolished. We're adding we're adding a wall, the parking gets gets reconfigured. We're adding these storage tanks, adding what we're proposing to, obviously, we're having this little building here. It's a shed that has the valving and the equipment for the for the water tanks, and then we have, we're showing the cooling equipment here as well. So this again, on the left, you can see what was approved. On the right is what we're proposing right now, just a relocate relocation of the parking spaces, the addition of the water tanks. One, we're proposing to build now. The second one, we're proposing to build a foundation now and the tank itself at a later date when when it's needed. You can also see some of the grading here, the retaining wall that holds up the grade on on Bourne Street and our neighbor's property. So these tanks sit a good deal lower, about ten, twelve feet lower than our neighbor's property, and it also shows some birmingham in this corner of the of the site, so that we're starting to hide and soften the the storage, water storage tanks. Great deal was made last last time about the visual of the waters tanks, and we've done our best to to give a good impression of what it's going to look like. As you, so this is a section, is this a north-south section, if you if you will. This this shows, actually, actually, it's not, it's it's the east-west section. It shows Bourne Street, the fence, the planting that we're installing, and then the water tank. And as you can see that a person walking in the street will see will see the top of these water tanks sort of through the tip of the trees. If the trees were all solid, you know, you nobody would see the the tanks, but, you know, to the to the tip of the trees, you will you will definitely see the tanks, but you'll get a glimpse of it. Same section, but now the north side, north-south section, and sort of from our neighbor's property through this tank, the tank that we're proposing to be constructed first. Again, there is the tank will be visible through the tops of the trees, but if this were all solid again, it would not be, and so we think we're screening the tanks adequately. You can see here the the wall and the grade change, great change, and how much lower the tanks sit. So we've done these, the photo simulations. This is from Bourne Street photo simulation photograph that was taken three weeks ago. And and this was the photograph taken. This is this is the the photograph with the tanks correctly placed in space in that location, where you can see here the boom that's in front of the tanks and planting. It's a mix of arborvitae fir and Bradford pears as size as they go in. So this would be a day one situation. You pushing this out to, you know, the year four, five, you'd be looking at some something like this again. You can catch a glimpse of the tanks, but, you know, I I do think the tanks screen the existing building pretty well, so with the trees in front of it, the shrubs in front of it, I think this is a much improved situation over the current current day situation. This is this is sort of almost the inspiration that we had. This is a photograph I took in August of this year in Champsworth, just about a mile south of the site. You can see here how well arborvitae and Bradford pears do screening. It's a very dense screen. It's just one line of arborvitae with some pears in between, and they they do a marvelous job of of screening. So it's a good, good situation. This is a photograph we got, and you've seen this when we were in front of you a month or so ago, a photograph that was sent to us from from the neighbor. You can see her property here and the fence, and then then the work that's being done. This, we're demolishing the the boiler room here, but you can see the work being done and and our neighbor's property. So we did photo sim of this as well. The the resolution isn't as good of these photographs, but this is again, in the situation that we just had, planting the arborvitae, the fir, and the and the Bradford pears. This is this is what we're gonna, this is what we're gonna see from from our neighbor's property. Then I I know some questions were brought to the fore about what do these tanks do on the water distribution for the city and how will it affect my the water pressure that I have in my house, which is a very fair question. So we went to the water department and got this map of the water distribution in the area. But this is, this here is is our site where it's it's about, it's it's in this area, and it's hard to see, so we blow, I blown this up a bit, zoomed in, and this and then highlighted the water lines. Again, this is this is our site, and this is Iowa Street here. Prince Ave is there. This is Otis, Bourne Street, and Andrews Street around here. So as as you can see, that we have a water line that runs from Prince Ave across our site. It's a public, public water line that runs through our site onto our onto our neighbor's property through their site and then connect connects into the public right away, the water line here again. So it's it's a public water line running through a through private property, which is is not uncommon in in the city, not uncommon, but it happens in more places. So this is this water line, and you can see here the water lines highlighted of of that run through the streets of our neighbors. So we're totally this line totally is disconnected from our neighbor's neighbor's property and their water lines. What we've been doing over the year, this is this is the water line here that's that's there currently. What we've been doing, what we have done so far in in Magenta, you see here the lines that we've already replaced. This was this was a public water line, and it still is a public water line that we upgraded, replaced on 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 our own dime, just to get a better water supply. We are planning to upgrade the line further. This this hopefully will happen this year. And then in the next few years, we will, until the edge of our property right here, we will replace that line as well. So that's that's improvement to the public water supply. Furthermore, I also, we're also proposing to connect, install a new line that loops New Hall Street, which currently is a dead-end water line that stops right in front of the bridge, to loop that line into into the public line running through our site, so that we're creating, not only for ourselves, we we creating a good water line loop, but also provides good back pressure for the city, especially on New Hall Street where it's a dead end right now. So this having this looped system with a good public water supply running along this property is make made it for us a good decision to install the water tanks, propose water tanks where we are proposing right now because it come coming straight of that straight of that line. So in that, I think is where where we wanted to leave it tonight, and at least for now, and Luke will will take it from here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Thanks, Teo. This is Luke Kipper with the Markley Group. I just wanted to address some of the other comments that we received as part of this application. You know, the first one was about the the store, the fuel storage permit that we're going in front of the city council for later. You know, as Teo touched on, we moved from a a centralized placement of fuel storage to, you know, each generator having its own individual fuel storage. So this allows us to really eliminate if we had one central fuel storage location, we would need pumping, we would need fuel piping running throughout the site. So this really allows us to to clean that up and make it a safer, easier way to store fuel. It was also brought up looking at, you know, below ground versus above ground storage tank. The reason that we've chosen to proceed with an above ground storage tank is they are they're a lot more reliable in terms of being able to perform maintenance as well as if there was a leak to occur. Obviously, with a below below ground storage tank, you might not know about that leak immediately, and it require a lot of activation, a lot of issues to be able to repair that. You eliminate with an above ground storage tank. The other advantage to above ground storage tank is it really reduces the complexity involved with the piping associated for it. With a below ground tank, we're now below our facility, and so we're pumping water off as opposed to using gravity to get water into the facility. So you know, we're adding a more complex, less reliable pumping system that provides obviously a lot of extra cost and a lot of extra potential point failure for that that tank and that water supply system. One of the other ones was the the use of the tank, but we do plan on using the tank consistently. It's not just for emergencies. Our facility would be drawing water off this on a regular basis. That does provide some benefit in that when mechanical equipment turns on or turns off can create this water hammer effect on on water line. So one of the benefits to having drawing from a tank like this is that you have a buffer, whereas our mechanical equipment can pull water in and out of it, but the tank itself might only fill once a day or once every two days, depending on how much water is drawn out of it. And I I think that's all. George, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't know at this time. I think maybe we can just turn it over to the board for any questions.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, thank you. So at this point in time, I will turn it over to the public. At this point in time, I will start with, does anybody like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Did anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Hello.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Randall Sneed, and I live at sixty-three Otis Street. And I would like to thank the planning board for allowing me to speak tonight. I planned to speak at the July meeting, but I was working late and arrived at the meeting as it was at the point where the planning board tabled the motion as I was joining the meeting to tonight. I would like to say that I have many concerns that, yes, they have addressed some of them tonight here that I still question whether that's going to be the case or not. As New England's largest storage center, does Markley Group as a large corporation want to be a good neighbor here in Lowell? The Markley Group originally attempted to circumvent the legal process by obtaining the proper permits and approval from the planning board to the now proposed major construction plan. If not for us neighbors contacting the building inspector to inquire about the construction being performed on the Markley property near Otis and Bourne Street streets, it would have, if not for that, it would have been likely that these two unauthorized thirty-five foot water towers would be standing right now. Markley's current major plan revision that has been submitted for approval, there are the two thirty-five foot water towers, seven cooling towers, the HVAC area, a water treatment and maintenance shed, and there is a smoke stack that they didn't speak to tonight that is on the diagram on page nine of theirs, that I would be curious as to what kind of pollution that may put out too, that that was all originally supposed to be parking area. I know that they're not saying it. They did speak to it about the fuel tanks that are not showing, that weren't showing directly in the plans, but they did show where they were kind of going at to an additional fifteen thousand one hundred gallons of fuel storage that they're proposing to the city and everything. I, the water towers are going to be connected to the water main. They did speak to that. How how will this really affect our pressure? We won't really know that for sure until they're up and running. That's for that's for definite. Most likely, it's going to affect our pressure because of the constant use that they'll be drawing from from here. What kind of noise will there be from these cooling towers in the HVAC area and the water treatment that's going to be there? They didn't speak to what kind of noise levels these were going to have. Generators can be very loud, the ones that they're proposing that to the city also, and how often will these be running? And what are the decibels that these are going to be running at? I understand that in their previous time, they spoke that the business plans had changed for the Markley Group, and they want to work within the large building at this time. However, that does not mean they need to locate the water towers to this part of the property. However, that does not mean they need to locate the water towers to this part of the property. Why can't the Mar- Markley Group construct the water towers over by Carter Ave, which borders a ball field, not residence? There should, there should be no reason why the Mar- that, by Markley, not be able to supply water to the building from that location. We have also heard that it could be possible to recess the water towers that they said it's just going to be more costly for them. Has Markley explored this opportunity fully? Furthermore, are the water towers even necessary to supply this three hundred and fifty thousand square foot building? From, uh, a Google search that I did of Markley's nine hundred and twenty thousand square foot building in Boston, it does not appear that, that they have any of these large towers associated with that building. Markley as a large corporation appears that their way to deal with the residents that object to their projects is to buy them out. As we went around the neighborhood, we were told that the Markley Group had bought neighboring properties that had posed their previous construction projects. This appears to make the opposition go away. During this time, the individual that they sent out to our neighborhood, Donald Essen, chief engineer at Markley Group, was not a very good representative. He was looking into neighboring properties as he was doing it, when it, when we addressed him for that and everything, he stated that he was interested in possibly buying some property around here. He finally provided us with a phone, name and a phone number, which he uh, wrote on just regular paper, not supplying us with a business card. However, we did look the name up and we did identify that he worked for Markley. So with that, Markley attempting to purchase all these neighboring properties that they have, is Markley's plan to try to expand their footprint more and try to fence off Otis and Bourne Street like they did with Carter Ave? Do they plan to leave these homes as residential or rezone this property in the future to industrial business? Markley's group, groups play, plans to replace several mature trees that they removed while excavating are greatly lacking. To create a row, in my opinion, unsightly tree of plants to obstruct the view of the water towers and the buildings does not quite make it. If you, uh, had also looked at the picture that I sent today, they did fly a balloon, which they didn't do any representation of, from their side of the property, uh, tonight. But from my property, it easily, even going above the fence from my neighbor across the street and across, and all the way to where their property was, it's probably easily fifteen, twenty, thirty, uh, fifteen or twenty feet above the fence line that I'm seeing already. How long is it going to be that it's going to be to obstruct? The mature trees that were present, they did obstruct, uh, that area, plus the, the building of that Markley owns. We are strongly opposed to the, these proposed major construction plans. Please make them leave it as it was, as parking area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
I would.
Name and address, please.
Eileen Castle, sixty-four Otis Street. I'm going to read my message because I don't really do well speaking in public. So I am going to read this to you, some of my thoughts regarding the new site plan. As you see, other than additions, everything seems to be the same. I did not picture the tanks to be gigantic. They will, there will be no place in my yard that I will not be able to view them. The picture Markley showed from Bourne Street was not a representation of what people in the neighborhood are going to see. All down Bourne Street will be able to see the tanks, no matter how they try to put trees up. They can't grow them fast enough for people to be able to cover that, for them to be able to cover those tanks. Um, the planning board requested that Markley look into other locations, and has that been done? Other than my concerns regarding the neighborhood is our water pressure, pressure. I spoke to the city water man, I'm sure before Mr. Markley did or anyone in his department, because when I spoke to him, he said to me, I know nothing about water tanks being over near your house. The only water tanks I know about were supposed to be on the other side of the building. I said, well, if you look on their plans, you'll see thirty-six pages or thirty-three pages, and they have water tanks right next to my house. So the gentleman that told you that probably didn't even know it until I told him about it, and he said he'd call Mr. Markley and find out about it. So the pressure, he had no idea for sure whether it was going to affect our homes and our neighborhoods. That's what he told me when I spoke to him. I asked how often they'd be filled. He did tell me about, about they needed to be going all day long and all night, that that would mean that the hammering wouldn't happen. So I guess maybe we have a bonus, no hammering. Other, there are other questions that I have. The cooling towers, what are they? What are they going to be used for? How will they, how, how will they make noise? How will we, how do we know whether we'll, they'll make noise or not? Because once they get there, we'll never get them out. So I think it depends on the, the city planning board to find out how much noise each one of them makes and combine it. So they'll, we'll have an idea of what kind of noise is going to be in our backyard. I don't think anybody wants to move into my, my house or anywhere near here. We're going to devalue all our homes. And another thing I want to know is, will they be admitting any odors? Um, people have allergies. This is something that the city needs to be concerned about. Um, I have another couple of things and then I'll be done. I have the fuel tanks. I want to know, down there, more fuel, more homes will be devalued. But the increase in the homeowner's insurance for fuel tanks, you can't have fuel tanks that close to people and not have to pay extra insurance. Um, unless Mr. Markley's found a way to get out of that. Diesel fuel smells, what is the health, people's health problems? What kind of odors are we going to have in the neighborhood? This is the closest neighborhood to the Markley Group project. Have the fire inspectors already been down there? And can I see the fire inspection papers? What entrance will the fuel tank use? And should they, I want to be sure that they cannot use any other entrance except the front entrance on Moore Street. That's all I have to say tonight. If you need anything. I appreciate everything you listen to and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, I'm Jaclyn Cole, and I live at seven Bourne Street in Lowell, of course. And I would like to completely second what Mr. Sneed has said and what Ms. Castle has said as, as well. Um, I believe that, um, the concerns that they have brought up are definitely a public health policy or public health concern, excuse me. Um, and I, I don't recall, I may have missed it, about the second entrance. I, I think where that's located right now, um, there's a gate there and there isn't traffic coming in and out. But what will be the increase in traffic that comes in and out of that second driveway is a question that I have. Um, I also want to know, are these questions that we're asking actually going to be answered before a decision is made? Or are we just asking them rhetorically? Is anyone able to answer that?
We'll let the applicant try, try to be butt, and maybe they can answer the questions. I can't answer the questions, I don't know.
Okay, well, some of them were for, um, the planning board and some were for Markley, but, uh, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Um, also, the gentleman mentioned about upgrades to the public, um, water line, but the public water line that is being upgraded seems to be all on private property. So I want to see what the benefit is to the city of Lowell. It seems to be more of a benefit to the Markley Group and, and their location that they're at. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that's a, a great fact to add. Uh, and I don't know what the back pressure is that you were talking about, but it seems like that was talking about, it seems like that's related to the water pressure that Mr. Sneed and Ms. Castle were talking to. If you can expound on that, perhaps it doesn't, but I, I'm just not clear on that. And I don't know what the what the means is for us to come back to you, should there be any number or any type of negative or adverse effect that comes after you put in these diesel tanks, after you put in the water tanks, because I for one am concerned that I don't want my street to end up like, um, Lawrence and Andover did, what, uh, two years ago? When they had those explosions? I know that may be farfetched, but I'm telling you that is a concern.
Well, first of all, the fuel tanks, yeah, the fuel tanks aren't before this, that goes before the city council. So we can't act on that, we can't give you an answer on that one way or another. That's for a public hearing before the city council, which the applicant stated earlier tonight. But we have no jurisdiction over that.
Copy.
We can't answer that for you, sir.
Copy, but Mr., um, Kinderman's, at least you heard the question, and I hope I'm able to attend that meeting as well. Um, they're going to see, can the, are they taking storage? I think for now that covers most of it, um, but I just want to reiterate for the third and fourth time what Mr. Sneed and Ms. Castle said, because um, I, I also understand that there was supposed to have been a letter that was sent out, certified letters to all the residents in this area, and I don't recall receiving that as well, and I think it was actually talking about these tanks that may be going in. And if that was done, I don't know if it can be resent out or, or what, but I'm going to stop rambling. I, I just, I just want to be safe.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Fred Laffin, I live at one oh one Bourne Street. I've resided here twenty-two years. Uh, as far as Markley, I mean, I've got some questions, like the coolant towers, what's the tonnage of them? I work on these things, and I don't want them that close to my house, they're very noisy. And the water tanks, are they just to maintain pressure? Are they going to have, is it a closed system? Or a makeup, you know, make up water for the coolant towers? And as far as, uh, uh, generators, uh, is there containment set up around each one of them? You know, if something happens, is it going to be taken care of and stopped right there? I don't want oil leaching down into the brook down there. And, uh, a few other things, I mean, I've worked new construction and with the, with this noise for two years of all the, I can't even sit out in my yard. My wife and I can't go out there. It's noisy from morning to night, and many times they stop before seven o'clock.
Six forty.
And I've worked in construction where they had a guy, and all his job was to do was with a fine mist, wet down the dust to keep it in the area. They do nothing like that. I go outside, I got COPD, and I know my breathing this year has been a lot worse because of all the construction going around here. And they have a, right here, it says, uh, oh, I got a kick out of it, light industrial. This is major every day with heavy equipment hammering and pounding every day. And, uh, I don't know, I've been promised, I mean, I've met people here walking around and then find out they're from Markley. And they've told me, oh yeah, we're going to put a nice fence up here. I don't see that. My end of Bourne Street from Otis, where it bounds, goes around onto Andrews Street, is a rubbish pit. People come there, they just dump their rubbish, and I've called and called and called. Their fence is falling apart, they get nothing but weeds growing around it. I mean, I got trees there, I don't want to see them cut down that are against the fence. But you can't get them to do anything. So why am I going to believe that they're going to do anything that these people are bringing up? You know, I mean, we got all kinds of promises about what kind of a neighbor they're going to be. But like I say, for two years, we've put up with this noise, and even longer than that, but it's been daily. My house vibrates with jackhammering on, on the granite blocks and stuff like this. I mean, I don't know, there's many things they can do, and I don't see them doing it to make things easier and better for the neighbors, you know? I mean, this whole street i- i- it's terrible. It's just like people just drive by and they see a fence there and it's falling down, they just throw their rubbish on it, and I call all the time. And I've called Markley on many occasions, I never got anywhere with it. The city finally has to come and do it, you know? And I mean, I pick up bags of rubbish myself, and then I'll throw it in maybe one purple bag every couple of weeks a- and throw it out to my rubbish, you know? I would like to see them police the areas, the back areas, and make them look as nice as their front entrance, you know? You drive by and I know people, oh, Markley, oh yeah. And I know people are really involved with the whole computer thing, and they tell me all the great things about Markley, and oh yeah, I was driving by there, please looks great. Well, come over by my house, you know, it looks like a pit, you know, and, uh, I don't know, I got, that's all I have to say, but thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, excuse me?
Yes.
I also have a, a
Can I just have your name and address, the record, please?
Uh, my name's Carrie Laffin, one oh one Bourne Street.
Yep, go ahead.
I actually agree with all of my neighbors, absolutely hands down. And another problem, my two daughters and I have, my kids play outside just about every day. And they both, they both have asthma and horrible allergies, and it's due to the piles of, the huge piles of dirt they have, and it blows everywhere. There's constant, I don't know what they're using as far as chemicals, but both of my daughters and myself, our asthma has been so bad this past year and a half, and our allergies, and I know, I've lived here for years. I know it's because of all the work that's going on over there. It's horrible, and the constant, you know, just to just to, you know, go over what everybody else was saying too, that the constant loud noises, the house vibrates daily. And by six thirty in the morning, it's already, it's so loud. I mean, unless you live right in this area where we all do, you honestly can't understand the the craziness of the house shaking and the loud noises, and there's no break, there's a lunch break, and that's the only time I feel like I could actually sit outside for fifteen minutes and breathe, because you, you don't even want to go outside. It's just so uncomfortable, it's so loud, and it's a vibration. And then I'm concerned about chemicals and like fuel, all this stuff. I have two kids, you know, and they're outside, like I said, daily. I'm really concerned. And I'm afraid to go along with anything because I'm so scared if we say okay to one thing, it'll just continue going down. Um, thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak?
Could I please speak what, about something else for one second?
Can I just wait to, can I just wait to see if other people haven't spoke yet first, and I can come back to you? Okay, I always try, I always try to let, everybody go first, then come back, okay? Anybody new like to speak?
Uh, yes, this is Jake Forth at thirty-six Iowa Street. I hope you can hear me, I'm not using my headset, I usually do, and do not use the Zoom at all. Um, so, hi, planning board members, you probably remember me. Um, Theo, you're still sharing your screen, is there any way that you could stop sharing it, that I could share a picture? Thanks. So, um, as you guys probably know, um, you know, Mr. Alite, he's back in, um, the meeting in July, gave you the history of Markley Group, um, and the history of Lowell at the time. So I'm going to try and keep this brief, but here's a rundown of where I have been on Iowa Street. I'm hearing concerns that have been very much mirrored by, um, myself and by my family at thirty-six Iowa Street over the last five years. So the Markley Group came to town, and originally the proposal was for all of the diesel generators to be on the north side of the property. That was what was agreed to, that's what went before the public hearing in twenty fifteen. Then suddenly, um, after the public hearing was held, some site plans started changing, and we started asking a question as to why there was temporary generators set up on the south side. The view that you're currently seeing on the screen is from the back door of my house. People are talking about generators being close or the water tanks being close to them. I present to you two twenty-five hundred kilowatt diesel generators within a hundred feet of my house that I have not had an explanation from Jared Els in the planning board department or from anybody at city hall as to why everything that has gone on with these tanks over at the corner of Bourne and Otis Street was never done when these were moved to the south side. The original plan had them all to the north side. So I do understand what the residents are fearing over on the other side, but the time for that was back when I was going around the neighborhood a couple of years ago and telling them, hey, this is a problem that everybody needs to be aware of. Now suddenly, because Eileen Castle and Mr. Sneed across the way have tanks going in their backyard, now all of a sudden, they've rallied the whole neighborhood around them. This is a little bit too late for us. These tanks are already here, they sit underneath them, there's no issue with the tanks. I'm very happy to hear that the Markley Group is moving the fuel storage to underneath them. That is actually a much safer option. So I have no problems with the site change that they're proposing, uh, to put the tanks underneath them. We do have an issue. We do have an issue, an ongoing issue, which the Markley Group is very much aware of with regards to the emissions that have come from these. They are very, very, very polluted. I know that there are better generators to have installed here, um, you know, I, I became a generator expert thanks to the Markley Group. So with that said, you know, we still have an issue with the exhaust fumes from these generators to this day. They have done some things to mitigate it, so I'm not out to demonize the Markley Group at all. They are trying. Now, keep in mind, when they came here, they had never done any projects in a residential neighborhood before. Never. So they have never dealt with residents before to figure out what needs to be done or what else is going on because they're usually zoned industrial and that's the end of it. Nobody around them has any beefs. So bringing it to where we are tonight, you know, it's been a long road with them. So yes, there's been some lies, um, you know, and the chief architect of the wire, you know, we know who it is, I've got the proof, you know, that we were lied to, especially with the street sale that happened. Um, you know, but there's some issues that we are not addressing tonight that deal with other parts of the property. So their entryway was also proposed to be changed, um, back in twenty eighteen. I need something to be done with that because, um, I believe it is Mr. Markley himself who insists on having those gates closed. Those gates are too close to the street and any vehicle turning in there obstructs the flow on Moore Street, which is the main thoroughfare into the property. So we do need those gates recessed back, so when they do build the other guard check that they are planning, that whole thing needs to be pushed back, they can leave the fence the way it is, but the actual entryway and the actual fence that the gate that cuts across, that does need to be pushed back because, um, if there's any delivery that goes in there, the block, the, the truck blocks Moore Street. So that, that is definitely an area that we need to work on, um, they are gonna be redoing that area at some point. So I do hope that that is well received from the Markley Group and understanding that with those gates closed, which I understand they want because of security reasons, that we need to figure out a plan for that because it is constantly stopping the flow of traffic. Right now, they've got a lot of construction workers going in there, so every morning at around like six thirty to seven o'clock, that whole area becomes a bottleneck. Um, you know, they won the street Baron Square, you know, they did, you know, went before the council, be it as it may, they won it. But now we've got to fix the problem that's with the entryway. So that's something that nobody's brought up tonight, that doesn't immediately button me either. These smoke stacks do. Uh, you know, so as you're seeing them here, like I said, these two, um, generators, I believe they have named them one three A and one four. Um, A are directly, um, within a hundred feet of my property to the left of, uh, one three A, which is on the left-hand side of the screen. Um, there are two more generators there. Um, and all of these, um, do kick on from time to time, I do realize they have to do a load test with them. Five minutes is usually what they do per, um, week for each one. Um, you know, and with the five minutes, because of the startup of them, the amount of smoke that's emitted from them is a lot. And because the topography of the area, we are uphill from them, as you can see by the photo. Um, there is a cul-de-sac that is formed actually by thirty-three, thirty-three Iowa Street and thirty-four Iowa Street in my property. The smoke actually sits in that area and just basically, you know, gives us noxious gas fumes until they shut them off and it can clear out. So this is something that's been ongoing. Um, you know, so I can understand and I do empathize with the concerns of the neighbors over on the other side, um, that they're now concerned about it going into their backyard. But this was brought up many times before this Planning Board, um, you know, and by the Conservation Commission, I spoke before the Conservation Commission to work with them as well. These are tier two generators, hospitals used here for us to mitigate the, the problems that we're experiencing on the south side. Um, you know, they did put these coning towers in, which I don't know if you can see my mouse, but it's basically these little things at the top of it because the, uh, smoke stacks, these parts down here weren't actually up to reg. Um, and technically right now, minus C modeling, um, there, these actual whole smoke stacks in the south are actually out of regulation under the code of Massachusetts regulations for smoke stack height. They should actually be taller than my house because they're within a hundred feet of my house at the measurement of it. Um, I encourage you guys to maybe check out the website for that, for emergency generators and what the smoke stack height should be. Um, you know, with that said, the folks who are over on the other streets, over on Otis Street and Born Street, what I'm talking about now does not apply to you. Uh, the height of your house is not within that distance, um, for those generators that are being installed on the north side. Um, so I wish you the best of luck in whatever you guys are doing with that. With that said, I'm gonna pivot now to the, um, water tank issue that is basically what's got everybody else up in arms. The water tanks, um, if you look at the picture that I am sharing, the service road that they put the water main on during that they did fix because I've been witness to it that they did. Um, you know, and you see that little fire hydrant down the bottom part of the picture? That's part of the water main right there, so that's a good thing, I, I very much like having that there. Um, you know, fracks in case we need it on our street. That, those water tanks and the concerns that our neighbors have, um, you know, basically it just comes down to looking at and becoming a professional at diagrams and schematics and looking at things. So when this became an issue for the neighborhood, I became aware of it and I did some homework on these water tanks. Um, you know, and so basically, the long story short of it is, um, you know, Luke and, um, I believe it, I'd say Theo, but I think it's Tao, um, are not joking here that, um, actually these water tanks are going to be a positive for our neighborhood. Um, they do go along the, um, water main, which does go across private property. This whole neighborhood is a mess of water mains and sewer lines going across private properties. And unless something goes wrong with them, which the Markley Group did find out when they accidentally punctured our sewer line on Iowa Street a couple of years ago, um, it can go catastrophically wrong, you're like, what the hell's the sewer line doing here? I get it. But anyway, back to the water tank. Yes, they're going to probably be unsightly, but you know why? Look at my view. This building that you see here, when originally the Markley Group came to town, we were very happy to have somebody move into this building with the original plan that went before and was posted on their site in January, or not January, July of twenty fifteen. So what I want to show to you guys, um, next up, hopefully you can see this, if you can't, let me know. This was the original plan. Now, do you see anywhere on the south side down here, any generators? No, there are no generators down here, this is what was sold to us. My mom actually spoke in favor of Markley Group taking this property on, why? Because everything was to be on the north side, the diesel generators were to be on the north side. We were fine with that. I understand things change. I get it, the situation is fluid, it's the famous last words, it's a former project manager, who we will pack, who I believe is still on as a consultant. I get that, things do change, however, you don't just park, you know, four twenty-five hundred kilowatt diesel generators in somebody's backyard and I expect them to be a little bit pissed, especially if you don't tell them. Um, you know, so with that said, it's very interesting to see here, you know, about what's going on, uh, with the, um, you know, with the, um, water tanks, now suddenly everybody's up in arms. I've gone around this community many times over to try and rally everybody and say, hey, if you've got a problem with this, we need to come together, especially about the street sale. So now the folks over there are concerned about them, you know, selling or cutting off the street there. Markley Group has no interest in buying your street. I hate to be the one to refute this on behalf of them, but they have no interest to buy Born Street or Otis Street or anything over there. What they wanted was a private entrance that looked like Raytheon. That is the entrance that they took, which was the old entrance to Prince Macaroni. And, um, as Eileen can tell you, because Eileen has some history in the neighborhood, uh, when Prince Macaroni put up the building that they're now building out, they actually, uh, wanted to take two houses for eminent domain to put that roadway in. That was allowed, nobody ever got worked up about it. However, you know the building, the bump out that, uh, there was in a picture? Um, that picture that was shared, um, showing the destruction of that bump out, that bump out was actually a fuel storage area that the, um, Prince Macaroni folks wanted to have put in there with the fuel line run to Born Street. At that time, Eileen Castle got together with everybody in the neighborhood and said, we don't want that. And that was the only time pretty much back at that time, uh, she might have been a kid then or probably in her early twenties, but her parents, um, as to when she said, hey, we don't want this here, it's only when it's in her backyard do we see something? I, I bring it to you again to show you, we gave up our sightlines knowingly for this two-story building when they first came to town. We knowingly did that because we wanted to see this project go somewhere. We didn't knowingly want the, these little diesel generators in here, that's been something I've been fighting them tooth and nail about since then. They know it, they know I'm still not pleased about it. With that said, pivoting back to the water tanks. You see this building, you see how tall this building is, this is the building that they're building out. Right now, based on my being home intermittently because of, of COVID outbreak, I can tell you that the first floor of this building, based on my own observations, is pretty well built out. The second floor is as well, you see a problem here? As we go up, they need water pressure to fill that building with fluid. That is something that they did not have an issue with at Prince Macaroni, A, because of the regulations that were put into place prior to um, that building being built, so they didn't need to have a water supply in there for the Prince Macaroni plant. So this is something that is definitely needed for this project and I'm gonna hate like heck to have anybody call into question what is going on with those water tanks at this point in time to stop this project because we on thirty-six Iowa Street have already given so much for this project, including what's still ongoing with these, to have these water tanks be shot down. Where they need to go is somewhere along the water main. If anybody did their homework on these water tanks, they need to be along the water main. So they are not lying about that, they need the pressure in order to fill them from a water main, so it has to go somewhere along there. Carter Ave, Carter Street, those folks over there, they don't, there's no water main over there, look at the schematic that Tao showed, it doesn't make sense to go there. So unfortunately, it only makes sense to put it somewhere along the property where I, I would gladly offer, if the folks on Born Street and Otis Street would want these four diesel generators, I will gladly take those two water tanks plus the coolant towers on the side that they're proposing to put on the side of the old Prince Macaroni building, I will gladly take those and stick them where you see this photo. I have no problems with that, my sightlines were already given up when they came to town. And we did that knowingly as a good gesture to get somebody in here. So I, I, I'm, I'm saying here, what we are dealing with on Iowa Street is not only, you know, as they say, the tanks are gonna be an eyesore, they don't need to be. What we need to figure out is how to make them not an eyesore, do we paint them perhaps like natural gas, um, the P-span gas tank over on the Southeast Expressway? Why don't we commission a local artist to put some sort of painting on them? I get that the, I know that the tanks are needed. So I'm not speaking for or against the tanks being installed, I'm just saying, let's use reasoning, let's do our homework here. I have, which is why I didn't sign a petition that you guys might have seen, um, in the folder, the document folder that was uploaded today. I didn't sign that because I did my homework on what they're proposing. It is needed in order to get this big building online. So I'm not for it, I'm not against it, I think that they, they need to be installed, so I guess it's for it. But in the same sense, we've got other issues that we need to mitigate outside of these water tanks because the water tanks aren't gonna make nearly as much noise as when these generators get turned on. Yes, we're talking about an eyesore, but yeah, guess what, I got an eyesore that pollutes. So, you know, if you wanna like one up each other, we've got a trifecta going on over here on Iowa Street and what they've got over there is just something that's not sore. But it is needed. So I mean, I don't want to sink the project for the Markley Group town, look at what I've got for sightline, nothing. So, that's what I've got to say for tonight. You know, so I'm in favor of the tanks, I guess partially, but I think we can do something in talking about decorating them. Let's paint them white or use, uh, commission a local artist to have them, you know, beautified in some way. That's my take.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to make an opposition? Anybody else we haven't heard from yet?
All right, well, hold on a second.
Sure. Take your time.
Hello, uh, I'm Nancy Forth, this is thirty-six Iowa Street. Um, for five years now, we have put up with Markley. Uh, it was a good thing they came to town, I'll gra- I'll say that. But, uh, we didn't know, the noise that went on, the construction was well before seven o'clock in the morning. The dust into my house, the vibrating because they had big, heavy equipment they should have used on highways and roads to construct and not behind residential houses, my shook, my house shook. But the whole time they were over there like it was an earthquake. Um, and that got done finally, the dust and the, the shaking. Um, but then the generators, uh, have been an ongoing problem. And I know they have to do five minutes per generator, a, a week to test them. But we also have a thing called the world clock, where they run them all day on Saturday and all day on Sunday. Um, to the point that even when they're on for the five minutes, I have, the, 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 uh, fumes sit in my yacht, I cannot go out in my yacht and enjoy my yacht. I also have bronchial asthma. And this kicks up, I have to stay in the house in the hot weather with all my windows shut because of the fumes of those generators. And the next two, the three and four that are coming online, the stacks are of less than a hundred feet from my house. And I need something to be done about those fumes because it's just polluting. Uh, and I know, uh, over a hundred years ago, mills polluted Lowell. The, the Lowell was built on mills and they had their stacks and they had their pollution. This is not the mill age in Lowell. They have buffers and, uh, things you can put on those stacks that will clean those fumes away. They even have them on cruise ships. But, you know, a, a big multimillion dollar company can turn around and fix that problem. And it's been an ongoing problem, the whole five years they've been here. Um, it's good that, you know, they moved here, but there are things around them that have created big problems. Uh, and this is my concern, um, you know, with this, um, and I thank you for your time of listening to me.
You're welcome, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? At this point in time, if need be, I will, uh, turn back over to the applicant and see if they want to try to answer some of the questions that have been raised by several of the neighbors.
Hi, this is, uh, Luke Kipper with the Markley Group. Um, I'll try to address the ones that I can here, um, you know, just the first one for decorating the tank, you know, we would, these are, um, they're, uh, a, a glass lined tank, so we actually, they, they come in a dark blue color. A pale, I don't know if you've got a, a photo of something similar for these tanks, but um, they actually, they're, they're made in a specific way so that, that paint won't actually stick to them. Um, it's mostly to prevent vandalism, but, uh, so we, we'd be happy to, you know, look at screening options and, and different ways like that that we can make the, the view, um, you know, more palatable to the neighbors and, um, you know, I, I think what we presented provides pretty good screening, but we're certainly willing to, if there's certain types of screening that the neighbors want to see, I mean, we're more than happily to, um, put that into our, our overall plan there. For the, you know, some of the rubbish and the, the trash on Born Street, we, we know that's been an issue and really it's been, um, unfortunate. Uh, you know, we, we try to clean up the property, people dump on the public road there, people dump on our side of the fence. Um, we do what we can to clean it up. Um, the, the plan for the whole site is to get the whole site looking like the main entrance. Obviously, this is a sixteen, seventeen acre site. Uh, when we moved in, we were planning on doing this in phases, so we did the, the main drive, the front entrance, uh, and we're working our way around it fast where, you know, in, in a couple of years, you'll be able to look at the site and the whole site is gonna look like the front entrance. I know it, it seemed like a while, but we're taking on little pieces of the site as we go around and as we get, you know, more customers to move into the building. Um, the cooling equipment, they are, um, you know, we've had, uh, our VHB, they're not on the call, but they're our consultant in terms of, um, sound issues, that we do have, uh, sound tests performed, both to test the, uh, the ambient, the, the baseline, uh, noise levels in the neighborhood as well as the noise levels of the equipment. We've had all the, these cooling towers modeled to stay well within the limits provided by the city of Lowell for property line. Uh, there's six hundred fifty ton pillar. It's, um, the water tanks are make up water. It's, um, the water tanks are make up water for those pillars. Um, we will certainly work with our site contractor about these, um, these dust control issues. Uh, these are, we, we haven't gotten them before from complaints from the city, uh, but we'll certainly get with them to be able to try and cover any uncovered piles as well as to get water trucks to, uh, you know, eliminate some of the, the dust that the neighbors are concerned about. A, a lot of the issues are with the, the, the fuel permit, which, a, as we said, was part of the city council. But, um, you know, being able to move away from the centralized fuel plant does allow us, you know, these, these tanks are actually in the base of the generators encased in concrete. Um, so it's not like there's ever any diesel fumes that would be exposed to the atmosphere. Uh, these are all sealed, concrete lined, fully encased tanks that are part of these generators that are going in. Um, I think that, K O, did you have anything you wanna add on the water line discussion?
Um, not, um, not really. I mean, it, uh, I know the one thing that was brought up was that it, it's a, it's a pop, it's a public water line and private property and that, and that's absolutely true. Um, but that, that still means that it improves the public water su- supply. And then the connection that we're making from that line to, uh, New Hall Street uh, will allow especially better pressure on New Hall Street. And that end of that, that line, uh, will help alleviate that. Um, and, and it provides pressure to the line that, the, the public water line that runs through, throughout property. So it's, it's definitely a press, uh, an improvement. And then indeed, as you, as you also mentioned, the tanks itself, how much they will, will buffer uh, any, uh, water demands and how, how much, and how they will smoothen out, uh, the water demand. Um, so I, I, I think those, those are the main couple of points. Um, and it was, it was a comment made about, uh, the, our back entry to, uh, uh, to New Hall Street. And I actually gonna see where I can share my screen again here. Um, where is it? Um, I, it's the one. Um, so we, we always had this connection here in the top right corner where my hand is. Uh, we always had this connection as an emergency, uh, egress for the fire department. Um, that will remain, uh, the same. Nothing changes on that, uh, that side. This, uh, gate will always be closed. What we're adding though is this connection here where, uh, in the old plan, you, you, if you were driving here, this is pretty much the way, uh, other than doing a U-turn and go back out to where you came, this was the way out. And now you can, uh, drive around this, uh, building. Uh, if you're here, you can just drive out and drive open with, as I mentioned, once this, once this is operational, fully operational, there will be gate here that will disallow that. And there's a gate here on, on this end as well that will, uh, disallow, uh, regular vehicle traffic uh, along here except in cases of emergency or, or need. But otherwise, uh, on a regular day, there won't be any vehicle traffic in, in the back here. That's, that's the goal.
If I could, uh, I'd just like to address the, um, comment concerning the noise from the construction. Um, I think everyone recognizes that primarily, uh, work right now is taking place in a large building, uh, which required us to do a lot of core and shell work. Um, you know, just to get the building stabilized, um, such. So that work, you know, by the end of this year, the heavy type of work will be complete. And, uh, you know, so the issues of, you know, noise and slamming and hammering all day long, um, will primarily be done.
Okay, uh, George, did you wanna have anything to add from our side?
No, I don't think so. Not at this point. I think, uh, there is, there is some, obviously some things that have been raised that, uh, I think I'm gonna have to go back and look at. Certainly, I, I just wanna say that, that the Markley Company that throughout the process tried to be a good neighbor, spent a lot of money fixing up and some, right? Possible mess has, has, right, along, they, there's none of that. So believe me, when I say who, Markley Group wants to be good neighbors, do, they want to, some of this stuff, this construction work, going to just here, once it's right, they put it in place, like to put it in place. And I think that's the best I can say. I don't know if, if Mr. Flanagan, um, did, did he available? Did you wanna make any statements on behalf of the company, Jeff?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, George. Um, no, I would just wanted to reiterate, uh, really what Georgia said. Um, you know, Markley has invested, you know, close to seventy-five million dollars currently in the project. Um, you know, we have certain commitments that we're completely up to date with, uh, with the city. And we do certainly, uh, prefer to be a good neighbor and try to do that where, wherever we can. Um, you know, part of the, the placement of the water tanks, in addition to being on the, uh, water main line, is the fact that they're, they're relatively passive, um, you know. So we felt that it was a better placement to have those, uh, towards the exterior of the property rather than any type of active equipment. So we do take these things into consideration and design. Um, and we believe that is a good solution there, given that they are not noise producing. But, thank you.
I think we're all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to answer any question show up from.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Could you just address, um, was it a question about the generators and the noise? Is that be, be a consistent noise or is that, will that change or does it stay the same? I believe a few people made, yeah, I believe a few people made that noise, especially Ms. Ford, I believe, was the last one to speak.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, part of our, the generators are regulated by the Mass DEP, who's the, uh, the authority having jurisdiction over the generator. So part of our application process to get permits to run those generators involves submitting a, uh, a, a sound model with, you know, the specific generators, locations, all the environmental concerns, uh, to get approval from the state to run those generators. So, you know, all the, the generators that we've installed to date, all the generators that are planned in the future, you know, need to comply with the Mass DEP regulations as well as, you know, the local Lowell restrictions for noise limits at the property line.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this point in time, the applicant has completed, um, presentation. I'll turn it over to any questions or comments from the board members.
I have a comment and a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart, go right ahead.
Um, what I'm hearing overall is a real concern by the neighborhood regarding the, the impact that the entire operation there is having on the, the environment, the local environment in that neighborhood. Um, and specifically, I have two questions relative to that. One, you know, the noise levels of various pieces of equipment that come up. I'd like a good explanation as to what the levels of noise, uh, can be expected and, and, you know, decibel levels and all the rest of it. Uh, with a comment maybe from a, a professional engineer regarding those. The second thing that concerns me is, you know, we heard a number of people talk about obnoxious gas fumes and fumes that are degenerated. And I'm wondering, there were two smoke stacks that, um, I think those are forties, had shown and explained. When you have smoke stacks like that, um, are those smoke stacks being scrubbed of pollution and fumes? And what is the correct height of those smoke stacks relative to the housing within the area? There are specific regulations that, uh, should guide them, and I don't see any background on that. That needs to be addressed. And the third thing is the, you know, the tanks themselves. How best to lessen the visual impact to the thing? That's all I have.
Does anybody from the applicant wanna try to, um, answer some of those questions that brought up by Mr. Lockhart?
Yeah, this is, um, uh, Luke Kipper with Markley Group. Um, you know, our, our criteria that we meet for noise levels is fifty-two decibels in the property line uh, for all the equipment that's added onsite. Um, I'm, I'm not a professional engineer. Our consulting group, uh, VHB is the one who does, um, really all of our sound and, uh, emissions modeling. Um, so I'm, I'm sure we can provide, uh, you know, a letter from that group saying that, you know, all the equipment being installed onsite is in line with, um, you know, both the, the local and the state restrictions on, on sound generating for these types of equipment. Um, the, uh, the, the same thing with the, the emissions from the generators. Again, I'm not an expert on this. Um, they're, they're tier two generators. Um, part of our submission to the Mass DEP involves a particulate study and model uh, in which they, um, you know, outline the size of the stack, the locations of, of receptors and neighbors and things like that in the area. Um, their model sent to the Mass DEP and approved by the Mass DEP, um, you know, as part of an ongoing permit process for us to run those generators. So, uh, we could always make, you know, that, that information available to the board as well.
Can I just add a word there? I just wanna, so, take what I appreciate, um, his, his words today. Uh, and I know he and I and company, uh, have had our, as far as that, I appreciate both. I think we're gonna take a look, see what Brian helped both.
I think one of the things that the gentleman mentioned was if they could be taller. I think that we felt that would be a mitigating concern if the smoke stack were taller. Am I correct with that, Jake?
Yes, you are. Um, the two that are especially are closer to our house should be higher than our house height, and they're not.
I mean, to me, that doesn't sound like a real difficult resolution. But, now again, I'm a, I'm an engineer, I'm a director of Mass DEP. But may, if they, if the, obviously, if the applicant can consider the matter, then obviously I think one of the things, uh, Mr. Light is, was the, um, height of them. If they believe they should be higher than their property, that's what they may, you may wanna look into. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Lockhart, anything further?
Oh, well, maybe just one more. The effect on the water pressure, uh, surrounding area. What is that impact? That was another issue that was brought up more than once.
K O, do you wanna speak to that for us?
Uh, sure. Um, I don't think there is, I believe there's no impact. Um, as we are, is pretty much on a separate line that's disconnected from, uh, that's only, uh, further away from the site connected to the, the general, uh, city of Lowell, uh, water system. Um, we, having this, these, uh, these tanks with the capacity of water that they're having, we don't have to fill them. We can fill them off hours when, uh, when there is not much usage and it'll be a, a really good buffer to the, to the water system. Plus, as I, as I pointed out, we're looping the system, we're connecting, uh, the main line towards New Hall Street, and that, that is, uh, improving the water pressure and the water situation, especially as I said, on, on New Hall Street, right to that end. Uh, so, uh, the water pressure, uh, will, will be no change if, and it might even be, uh, be improved.
I would assume that's something that the, our water department, the archives, will wanna bring. Uh, that would, uh, forest, from everything I've been told, like, like, uh, that if anything, it should be better, but.
Anything else, Richard?
That's all.
Okay. Any other board members?
Chairman.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Um, just so you know, um, I understand that they, the, um, some of the things that we're talking about, these water tanks are within thirty feet of my house. So if I don't think that I'm going to have water pressure problems, I can't even imagine. We have one inch water pipes in the old homes, and I'm sure that everyone here that lives in an old home knows that. So unless you can tell me instead of thinking what you might think that everything's gonna be good, I'd like to know for sure before anything happens. I think this is time for us to, to come down to the facts, not just, well, I think this is what's gonna happen. I've heard this over and over again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Back to the board members. I think, um, Ms. Galvin had, Lieutenant, had, uh, questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I have a series of comments and just a couple of questions. Um, I first just wanna say that my biggest concern with this project is just the number of changes from the orig, from the series of approvals that it received, that the project received from twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, and that it was the neighbors who flagged that there was, uh, significant deviation from the plans that were approved. That's really my largest concern about this project. And then the Department of Planning and Development outlined a number of changes, um, within their staff report. So I just wanted to make that note. Um, I am torn because this is in a light industrial zone, and I understand that it abuts the residential, um, neighborhood zone. And so I do think, I appreciate all of the neighbors, um, being here today to voice their concerns. Um, but the reason I'm torn is because it is zoned for this use. And, um, if I'm reading the, um, zoning dimensional regulation correctly, which I think that I am, is that, um, basically they could build to the property line with no real setbacks and no height restrictions. So this, and I believe this was brought up at the last meeting, but, um, it's zoned for this use. So that's why I'm torn on this issue, um, but I understand the neighborhood's concerns. And then my questions are, in the plant, because so much of this is kind of dependent on the planting, and there was a, there was a series of images for, you know, the day one, the, you know, three year and five year, I think it was, um, on the planting plan, although there's symbols of what the species will be, there's no quantities listed. And actually on the plan, there is no, um, indication of what those species are. So you've said it today, um, but I just wanted to highlight that. And maybe that could be one of the conditions, if this is approved, that maybe that could be one of the conditions that I think there needs to be a more thorough review of that planting plan. Um, because what you're saying and what's in the plan, um, could potentially, there's room for it to vary, and I wanna make sure that it doesn't vary. Um, and then my final question is, in the DPD staff review, is they bring up, um, cooling towers that weren't in the first approval in twenty eighteen? And I think it's on the kind of eastern side of the building. So I was just, and maybe this got touched upon and I missed it, but I'm just curious, um, what is the height of those cooling towers?
I, this is, uh, Luke Kipper with the Markley Group. I, I apologize, I don't have the exact height of the cooling towers. Uh, you know, the, the discharge of the cooling towers is all. I, I, I don't have that number, and I, I don't wanna give the board an incorrect answer right now.
Yeah, it seemed unclear, um, in the, in the documents and in the DPD's review. And so I just wanted to highlight that I did as well, um, that it was a change from the last approval. Um, and then I guess my last, sorry, my last comment, I already said I had my last comment, but I have one, um, other comment, is I do think that it's a little bit misleading that you talk about this, there was the, all the section drawings and the sightlines from the properties, um, I think it was Eileen's property, um, was where they were taken. Um, but I do think it's misleading that the sightlines are going above the fence, and the fence is a, is a mesh fence. And so I don't really think that that's appropriate to say that it won't be seen, um, and to show it that way because you can see it standing on the street because it's not a solid fence, it's a mesh fence. And to show it that way because you can see it standing on the street because it's not a solid fence, it's a mesh fence. And so something else, I know, I understand it's a big property and there's incremental improvements, but maybe something could be considered about refencing the property, especially where it abuts residential district. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Can I, can I, can I talk, talk about the response to this?
Yes, go ahead, please, sir.
Hi, thanks, thanks for bringing up those comments. The, the drawing set that was submitted to the planning department and I would assume you all have a, a, at least PDF copy, has callouts for the plant material and has on the, one of the pages, not, not on every page of the, the landscape plan, but there is a plan schedule on one of the, the pages of the, the planting plans and I think there's three plant pages. So it's, it's on there, quantities and species are listed. That being said, I'd be happy to, to review that and to adjust it if, if anybody has, has any comments about, about that. And I, and I again, I, I do want to bring up the, the water line since it's, it's such a an important question and people, people keep on bringing it up. But this, you know, again, all the, the fine lines here are all the water lines on the people on, on the, the streets.
Already saw that.
Around us and, 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 and actually an elevation above us as well. And we are proposing to take our water line that we are improving, replacing, and that runs throughout property, so independent of all the water that, the pressure that happens in elevation above us. So I'm, I'm, and again, I'm not a, a water engineer and I haven't done any pressure testing around the neighborhood. But the, the pressure in the neighborhood will not change to negative. I'm pretty confident. So that's, that, that would be, I think, my response, Ms. Ms. Galvin, if there was anything else that I.
Yes, she did mention the sight lines with the fence.
Correct, yes, thank you. So let's go, and, and because of the fence, that's why we did it, this photograph is taken exactly from the neighbor's property. So this is what I think you, you will see and yes, the mesh, it's a mesh fence, but you can clearly see how well that is screened. And as I said, this, this, this photograph was provided to us by, by the neighbor. So we, we photoshopped this in and did a photorealistic image based, based on that. So we believe that the tanks are gonna be adequately screened. And not only the tanks, but even the existing building will be adequately screened by this, these, these plantings. And it's, as I said, it's a combination of other parties, there is some fur in there, they're a bit further back and then there as those species are bred for this, just because they're very dense and, and upright. But this is, this is a photorealistic representation of the, the screening of the tanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Galvin, anything further? No. Oh, excuse me, stop. Ms. Galvin, Ms. Galvin, anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, okay, no problem. Any, next planning board member, please?
Hi, Chairman, I had one question.
Yes, Russell.
Um, I, it's kind of more of a question to Francesca, actually, I was wondering whether or not the water department had reviewed this project and the plans and whether or not they had an opportunity to comment.
Uh, they did receive the plans, we send out all of our applications to all of the city departments, including the water department and if you guys didn't receive any comments from them, then they did not provide any comment to us.
Thank you.
I think what we, on, on the, this, the things we got from Jared September first, it just had a comment, I believe, on page six about water utility, that was all. And it said, what is the purpose of the tanks and how will they affect the existing water system in the area? Will the applicant use the tanks continuous or only during emergencies? That's the only thing I see from water utility. I don't know if there's anything further that we can get from there, but that's all I saw on the memo that was given to us by Jared on date of September first under DPD comment. Anything else, Russell?
Uh, no, I think that, I think that's everything, I, I mean, I share a lot of the concerns that have been brought up for the neighborhood. I understand sort of this divide between the property being a light industrial area and the effects it can have on the neighborhood. I feel like we should have a little bit more information about the permitting process with Mass DEP and the concerns brought up by some of the neighbors regarding both the smoke stacks as along with the, essentially really just the smoke stacks and the emissions. I, I would appreciate knowing that information before making a vote.
Thank you. Any other board members have any comments?
Chairman?
Yes, Kayla.
So I, I want to follow up on, on members' entries, comment. I, I feel like we, we should seek further comments from the water, water utilities and water departments. With the information we gained from the planning, planning board meetings, now that we know what the water tanks are used for and also the operation perimeter that they will be used. And I would like to receive that, you know, with a, a pass from the water department before making a decision as well. Changing topic. I, I acknowledge all the concerns from the neighbors and then I concur with the other members' comment that it's, it's always tough when, when there is an industrial use right next to abutting the residential use. So I, I certainly see the issues and, and I think it's the responsibility of the board to, to find ways to mitigate that. While, while assuring that the, the property owners retain, like, can, can do what they, they allow to do on the property. So I, I make a list of things that, that was mentioned and, and I heard that the applicants are willing to address them, so one by one, and I think these might, might be incorporated as conditions to the approval if, if we move forward to that at the end. So it was mentioned that the second entrance on, let's see. The second entrance to Andrews, Andrew Street will be used for emergency only, so I will certainly want to make that a condition so that is part of the permit. And then the applicant also mentioned wishing to make every part of the property looks like a front entrance. So there's also a comment from labor mentioning about the deteriorating fencing on Born Street. So I'll, I think that discussion on this matter, whether the applicant will also upgrade the fencing abutting the neighborhood on this end, on Born Street and Otis Street would be, you know, would, would be part of the condition and also I understand that the neighbors might not want to do that, so I, I, I do want to reach an agreement here between the neighbors and, and, and market school. And then a fourth, third point regarding screening. I, I agree with Member Galvin that we should have a landscaping plan submitted and, and work with the TDB, the, uh, DPD to, to, to this satisfaction and, and with the screening as a part of it, being a part of it. And then a fourth point, the dust control, I, I don't think is, it needs to be a condition, but, but I, I will, I'll be encouraged if the applicant is willing to put up more attention to controlling the dust and addressing the concerns of the neighbors. Understanding that the construction tearing down buildings and, and regrading the service will create a lot of dust and so so that will be, that will be something that I, I think will show that how, how the applicant will, will address neighbor's concern. So that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Kayla. I think Mr. Fisher, you have it next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just to share the, the other members concerned. The comments that we received from DPD, I had concern, water utility, they had more questions rather than, you know, constructive comments for us to act on. And, and Mr. Chairman, you read it, you know, it says, how will they affect the existing water system in the area? Well, we're looking for some, as, as one of the speakers tonight, we, we want to make some factual decisions. Obviously, the, the concern is, will this have an impact on the neighborhood and even the applicant's representative made it very clear, he wasn't an engineer and an expert on this. So I, I think we need to have some engineering input laws to what the possible effects would be. So I, I disappointed the, the kind of even, these were just open-ended questions on our, our letter from, our memo from DPD, so that didn't answer any of those questions. And also, I think the applicant is going before the, the city council for a license for the fuel tanks. But they're changing the site plan and I heard them mention gates because now it'll create a perimeter road around the building. Those are site plan issues. And the first thing I thought of, Mr. Chairman, you know this from other projects where there's gates, you know, we make it a condition. We want to comment from the fire department first of all and then, you know, whether they have a E.T. or whether they'll have, you know, will it be locked? They'll, they'll, they'll cut it with a bolt, whatever the case may be. But I, I think it, I, I want clarification, I honestly think the, it's a site plan issue as far as how it's being addressed, the, the access and where it's being moved to, the, the actual license and the ability to store the fuel is the, you know, the granting authorities with the city council, not us, but I think as it pertains to site plan, I, I think it's, that aspect of it is within our, our scope here. And also for clarification as well, and this is, this is obviously always the dilemma when you have let alone retail zones or, but now you got light industry that abuts residential, so it's really some, some conflicting uses. But in the, in the memo from DPD and they outline what's in the city zoning ordinance, but item number four for site plan review, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage or other outdoor services, uh, service areas viewed from public ways or premises residentially used or zoned. So this is what we're looking at here today. And not just something that you see that's unsightly because the building's unsightly. We've got a tank that's really the person and, and the, the, the neighbor that going to be the closest, but probably if they are tall enough, reach over the fence and come pretty close to it, I mean, it's, it's, it's really close to the home. So, you know, I, and I was very disappointed to hear that you can't change the color of the tank. And that's, that's obviously creates a, a challenge as well and I think Member Galvin pointed out quite well that quite frankly, what we're proving, if we were to, if we were to approve this evening, they didn't give a definitive plan on the planting. It would be still, hon- honestly, it would be ambiguous as to what was approved. And that leads to, Mr. Chairman, you can recall and, and Mr. Lockhart, we, at one point, we met out at the site when those generators ended up appearing on that other side. And we had a commitment that they would be looking at screening, which I didn't see from the neighbors, I didn't see any screening based on the photograph that was presented this evening. And trying to minimize the effect of the smoke stacks and obviously I'm not an expert on that, but seems to me the height was one of the issues. So I'm disappointed, I, I'm actually disappointed from that meeting and then what I'm looking at here today. So again, we're all very cordial and I appreciate, you know, the investment that, that the Markley Group is putting into the site, but, you know, we're here making a site plan decision on, on something that has an, an impact and we've dealt with them in the past on some issues and, and I, I'm not pleased with the way it's unfolded, I'm not pleased with the changes that have been made with the original site plan and, and really, you know, being presented as minor changes and, and we're continuing. So obviously those are, those are all areas that I have some concern with. Obviously, the biggest area of concern is that second tank, that's, I know you're not looking to do that at, at the outset, however, you're seeking approval for that and that's, that's obviously a, a concern. So I think we need to get some, I want to get something definitive from an engineer regarding the effects of those, those tanks on the, on the surrounding neighborhood. There needs to be a, a, a very clear definitive landscaping plan. I also, and it was commented, I didn't hear the applicant discuss it all and I, and it was, it was somewhat dismissed when we first discussed this and continued the, the hearing. Or I'm sorry, not continued, but determined that it was not a, it was not a minor change is with any other location that those tanks could be that would not have as much of an impact. And, and I didn't hear anything addressed to that point. And understanding it may be more costly, but now is the time to really explore that. So I, I really would like to, to again, get some definitive information on the, on the effects of the tanks, regardless of where they're going to go. If in fact this is the location and it's determined that it cannot be placed in any other spot, we'd have a very clear landscaping plan. And I, I really would like something that would address in the short run and not, you know, it's nice to have a five-year lookout that says, you know, this would be, you know, somewhat a screening. I'll be honest with you, if you're trying to sell any of those homes around there and you, you, you bring somebody through the backyard and, and the tank's right there. You know, and you, you can say the building's unsightly, but the tank is so close, you can bounce a tennis ball off it when you're in the, in the backyard. So obviously that, that takes on a whole new dimension. And I go back to the generators, it was, it was communicated to us that an effort would be made from a screening perspective and also with the, with the effects of the, minimizing the effects of, of the release of, of any gas. So a little disappointed with that as well at this juncture. And I guess that would be my comments, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I would agree with the other, other members as far as I don't believe we're in a position to make any kind of a decision here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I only have one or two questions, I believe everything else has been covered pretty much in depth, either by the neighbors, the applicant, or the board members. Can we see the screen back of the tanks, please, if possible?
Me, just.
The water tank, yeah.
That's.
No.
Yeah. Um, hang on, so that's this?
Nope, the other one from inside a little better. Nope, no.
This?
Yeah, can you show us a better view of that one?
This, this is, this is, this is, uh, what we have.
Yeah, so the water tank will be lower than the building that's, that coming building, correct?
Correct.
By looking through that, I mean, I'm looking through the tree line, but I know, we talked about in the past how the building itself wasn't very tightly, but obviously.
So this, this, this shows it, sorry to interrupt, this shows it, it's the water tank, the base of the water tank is, is, let me do quick math here, seventeen feet lower.
Oh, than the, than the height of the building, okay.
Uh, no, yeah, no, the, no, the base, base of the, base of the water tank here is seventeen feet lower than the, the road elevation.
Okay.
So these, these are seventeen feet depressed, if you. So these are seventeen feet depressed, if you will.
And I guess the question was, they have to stay the color, what's that, that blue color that we're seeing, is that the color that proposed?
Yeah, this is, this is a photograph, this is not a tank and it it's a, it's an unfortunate perspective, but this really is, is the color that it's going to be. It's a glass-lined tank and blue with a with a uh white dome.
With a white dome, okay.
Yeah, just, just, just like this.
Well, obviously, the white's not, the white doesn't take out as much, because obviously you try to match it with the clouds in the background, so that that the white try to tell. Um with a landscape area, yeah, um. Let me think, let me just check my notes for a second, I went quite a bit down. So I know that we heard before is that where the fence line is not the property line, I believe the property line goes out a lot further. The fence line is staying, I mean, the fence is staying, correct? Um chain link fence that that's the. Well, yeah, okay, because I know Mr. Lighty showed us the um. The property line before, obviously, the fence line is not the property line, it's actually um further into the back of the neighbor's yard, okay.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was this picture where you can see that the fence line is is this dashed line here. And the big bowl line actually is a property line, this is uh, this is about eight feet here that uh the.
Between the property line and the fence line is eight feet?
Correct, that 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 fence line encroaches on our uh on our property and it's it's two feet up front.
One second, let me just finish it up, so and the fence line is, um how close did uh? You have a line, I remember I had time reading it.
Uh yeah, this is uh, this is about, is about eleven feet, so there is about three feet between. Uh the fence line and the top of the wall.
Top of the wall, okay, and then from the top of the wall, what's it to the um to the tower, how many feet is that?
Uh this uh, this is about ten.
Okay, alright, thank you.
This is, this is the second tank.
Okay. So is the second tank closer to the property line than the first one will be?
Correct, the the actually, the 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 first one is actually here, up 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 here.
Okay, okay. Okay, and and as indicated, you want to do the first tank, the second tank, you put the bottom in and you build the second tank if needed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, alright. Turn your lights, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to talk about the fence itself.
Um yeah, I think I got that pretty much by that plan and what you discussed in the past, but. So I understand all that. Okay, thank you. Okay. So any of the board members have any further questions or comments as a result of what was brought up by staff members on myself? I mean, it sounds like most of the board members feel that we need some more information before we can make a definitive uh decision on the site plan.
So Chairman, I I I do want to um clarify on the fence line, whether whether there's a plan to replace the fence line. Or, you know, to make them, I I know what the entrance fence line looked like, but uh, you know, whether there are plans and and. I I also want to hear what what the neighbors would think of like about the fence lines.
I I can I speak to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
That's something I was going to bring up.
Okay.
We, I I guess there were some differing opinions with as far as the neighbors are concerned. Uh as you know, anyone who sees it, I mean, I I call it miles, but the amount of new fencing that's been put up is. Great improvement is is quite uh obvious and extensive. I I think that we would be willing to consider putting up more fence similar to that. Um but I'm not sure what the the neighbors at this point uh are talking, so. That's something we certainly would be willing to consider, um if if that is some sort of a.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And and if I, if I may, I do want to respond to a comment that was made uh. Just a short while ago about about the planting plan, I I pulled up and it's on the screen now. Uh the planting plan that's uh in in your packet, so you have that, it shows, it shows the plant schedule. Uh plant schedule here, and if you scroll uh through it, it and then we go to the section here. It has the calls and the rotation of the plant material that is posed, so there is a complete planting plan in your packet.
Can you zoom, can you zoom in on that where your person is right now?
I can try.
Because my concern is that there were symbols, but that there weren't uh species callouts, I was looking at the overall.
Yeah, the overall, but then then we have sort of the zoom in and here here you can see it actually, uh with the breath appears. The actually, the abius here and then all the uh the alba vidi, and you can see here how the alba vidi will stay on our side of the fence. Um you know, we we elected not to uh propose any planting on on the other side of the fence. Although that that is our property. Um but as as I said, you know, this is, this is, this is the, this is what we're proposing quite. Uh at this point in time, uh if if this is insufficient or if the the board deems it insufficient, we can, we can. Bog this up, or we can uh maybe reserve a a certain amount of money that once this is installed. Um that we come back and and plant more where we where we see where there's holes and where we want to plant additional stuff. Uh additional materials, so we can also sort of do do that.
Thank you.
They're complete.
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you for that clarification, because it wasn't obvious on the overall planting plan. Um I would ask that the quantities be listed on the overall, because I think all the quantities were blank. So that would, that would help have it on one piece super.
Yep. Uh yeah, oops, sorry, but yeah, that any of the quantities there are are not there, yeah, but in in the the. The detailed plans, it's it's there, but we we can adjust that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, many of the board members? If not, what's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I guess, a a couple of questions uh regarding some expert. Analysis of the impact of the tanks. Do we feel that that we possess that in-house here in the city of Lowell? Or is that something that I I I I guess, Fran, I I guess I would. I I'd almost be looking for D P D to communicate with the the water department, water utility and and. I mean, these these tanks don't go in every day, I don't know, is it something we need to get some sort of a uh an independent uh. Recommendation, or I I I just.
Yeah, we could definitely ask the water department and just gauge whether, I'm not exactly sure what their. Um whether they would be able to look into it, but they, I'm sure, would definitely know whether. Uh you know, professional water engineer would need to look into it instead and could um point us in that direction.
Yeah, because that's what uh, that's what I would would want to see in this case, and and if in fact. Um it it's, it's outside of the city's expertise, then I would be looking for the applicant to pay the expense. Um oh, a- again, an independent uh recommendation. Um and then also, I think we need to have comment from the fire department regarding the um. What what this, what the applicant is seeking regarding the the change in the the generators with the fuel, with the belly tanks and and and. Again, I know the licensing is going before the city council, but from a site plan review perspective, I think we need to get. Comment from the fire department on that. Um and then I really would like the applicant to look at really at i- i- in. That at least that second tank, is there a a different spot that second tank can go in? Uh and it it really is because of how close it is to the abutting property, that that really is the biggest concern. But we could really take a look at that, I I I would appreciate that from the um from from my perspective. Um and this as a goodwill perspective as well, I I it it's not part of this application, but. You know, um boy, when we we look at those generators that were moved to the other side, uh you know, yeah, I guess there could be an a- a- an argument. Made that whether that needed to go back to a public hearing, so um and and it was, it was, it was um. It was communicated to us that an effort would be made um to work with the butters for it it from a screening perspective. And trying to minimize the effects of um of those smoke stacks and in in and in fact. Uh I think it would be helpful even i- if we could even get something from from the state regarding the height. I mean, we're not engineers on that, uh I appreciate what the uh what the the neighbor had to say about going to the website and. That's not quite how we make decisions as far as, you know, we need to get some some um some expert uh uh. Some expert uh uh recommendation on that, uh and if in fact, would if that would help, uh I. Whether or not it's required, and it becomes the difference between being a good neighbor, doing what I'm told to do because I have to do it. Or taking a look at and say, is there something else I can do to help mitigate what the issue is, I mean, that's really the difference, you know, I I. I dealt with that before, I'll do whatever the city tells me to do, well, that's really not necessarily. Going out of your way to try to help out, and and again, we appreciate the investment that's going on here. Um and certainly the front part of the building, uh the entrance looks really great. Understanding it's a huge site and you're working your way around the site, uh looking forward to having a. We, I'm sure the neighbors will be happy when it's completed, it's not fun living, uh you know, years around a construction site. Uh that 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 takes its toll, and I understand that and and can appreciate people's frustration. Um and then when you add a pandemic where you're spending more time at home, that's not a lot of fun. So, um again, I would hope the applicant would take the concern seriously, um and and. I I guess, having said that, I don't know uh from a timeline. When we could get all of that addressed or get some feedback, uh so from a. Continuance perspective, Fran, I know, do you have any any idea or to the applicant as well, some of the. Some of the the items that have been thrown out there tonight to get some information on as the, you know, our next meeting is um.
Chair, if I may, I think um you'd want to find out what happens at the city council first, am I correct by making that assumption? So it would have to go past the city council meeting date?
Yeah, I think that would make sense, Mr. Chairman, too, as far as, because then that would, you know, they've got the license for the, if they do. If they do, then that has a bearing on on the site plan, so sure.
Yes, I remember you mentioned how that would affect the site plan, you mentioned how the fire department, there'd be a change, um so.
I was going to suggest the first meeting uh in October.
So Mr. Lighty, what what's the date for the city council meeting, I think I I was told the other September?
September twenty seventh, yeah.
September twenty seventh for the city council meeting?
Second, and I think you have a meeting after that, but let's go over to the first week in October.
Yeah, October fifth is uh, yeah, October fifth would be the first meeting in October.
That's fine, and 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 Mr. Fisher, I think, I think you brought up some good points, uh we we. You know, the nice part about having things recorded is that it's going to help us. I know a lot of us have all taken notes tonight, but we're going to try to get more particular. I think we can deal with, and I understand uh the neighbor is concerned drawing the waves, but we want to try to help them.
Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I was going to say, so um I think we requested maybe a motion to continue till October fifth?
Put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mr. Fisher. I'm sorry, and who who's second that, I'm sorry?
Me.
Mr. Lockout, okay? Um okay, um oh, motion is made in the second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote yes, any opposition, hearing none. Um the only caveat that I would throw out would be. Uh Fran, if you can check with the water department, and if they're telling us that's something that they can and can't do, if you could communicate. With the applicant and let them know on that, so they'll know which direction to go on that, and then um. If they need more time before October fifth, due to the fact that the water department cannot answer that question for us, they could probably let us know.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, um you know, and I mean, obviously, if they don't feel so, I mean, obviously, turn your light, you didn't want to know what their response is as well. Um to see what if they can handle it or if they feel that, I mean, and um if they feel that that's going to be adequate or something, uh. Please give us some guidance, one night or another.
Who am I trying, if Mr. Fisher brings up this point, I don't know if it's necessary.
Yeah.
Will we be willing to work with them and hire a consultant?
Okay, yeah, and then, you know, let me tell, we we get a comment from the water department, they said we can do so much, but we need more information, obviously, we'll pass that along to you. And then you can try to answer it from there, and if you need more time to work with that, obviously, um you know how to address the board if you need more time.
Great.
Okay, okay, so motion is made in second, uh the matter, this matter will be continued to October fifth. So we're all set on this matter, and we'll be moving along on the agenda. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all very much.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So moving along on the agenda, um we have any notices, many of the board members, or any comments, many planning board members?
Start board meeting is uh the fourteenth of this month, Monday. Not sure what we're covering, I haven't heard.
Chairman, did we, unless I missed it, did we do the approval of the minutes from?
I I think when the minutes went out the other day from Jared, he said he was going to put them on for our next meeting.
Okay.
I think he sent the email out, he goes, these are the minutes, but let's put them on for the next meeting, um I remember if I read that correctly, so. Uh I skipped over, but yeah, so we can come back and address that.
That's fine, yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
I know um a couple of board members had some small minor modifications, but I thought, if I remember reading it correctly, Jared. Jared said he'd put them on for the next meeting to give us more of a chance to digest them, so they work kind of lightly and he does a good job of doing them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um so if anyways, many minutes of approval is uh at this time, the minutes from our last meeting, which was only just a week ago. We'll put those on for the our next meeting in September, if there's no objection to that.
That works.
Okay, anything, and Fran, anything else you have to update us on, I know you've been, uh since we've been checking base um weekly and daily lately.
Yeah, um the only other thing to mention is that we do have signatures from Mr. Chairman and uh member Lockhart on. Um the letter that we're sending to land court for.
Your signature authority?
Yep, exactly, and so we'll just need um three more signatures for that.
Oh, Fran, I'll try to get the, well, if, could I get there Monday or or?
Yeah, yes, so if you're going to come on a day that we're not open to the public, you can just call me before. You head into the office and then I'll just move at the door.
Okay, that's fine.
That's what I did yesterday, I just called and I told I'd be, anybody be in the office, I'll be down in ten minutes, I went to the front staffs, I called, she came out. Signed it, I talked briefly about tonight's meeting and.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, does somebody else have a comment?
Oh, Fran, I will try to uh stop by tomorrow morning.
Great, perfect.
Yeah, she just requested you give a call ahead of time, so, okay, so and then um.
Make sure you're not stranded at the door.
Yeah, the other question will be Bob then.
Uh, alright.
So, uh Fran, if you want to reach out to him, I know he was ill this evening, so he couldn't join us.
Right.
Um you want to see which best way for him to, I mean, I guess, because we raised the question last time, did he often assign, and the answer Jared told us was no, so um. So, all the other question, Fran, is if if you do have all the other signatures, is it possible to mail it to him, have it signed and send it back yet? But that's a discussion you can have with, that's a discussion you could have with him.
Yep.
Or drop it off at his house if possible, um you know, whatever, whatever works for you and Mr. Malovich.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh if we, anything further, if not, would entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion's made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair, vote yes, any opposition, hearing none, we're joined, I have eight thirty seven. Tonight, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Participation.
Bye everyone, thank you.
Ball gone.
Yeah.
Yes.